We're going to make like this again.
Everybody, please rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Okay, this week is Future Farmers of America Week in the country. So at this time, let's dedicate today's meeting and our thoughts and prayers to all of our farmers and people that feed us each and every day. We've got more than 1,100 farmers in Trumbull County that are family working farms that help not only feed Trumbull County but feed the world. So in your own way, let's bow our heads, say a prayer to ourselves and wish for a great day today.
Also, Commissioner, on top of that, for Paul Davis, who was our senior levy board member, who was a tremendous asset to Trumbull County, tremendous volunteer, passing away, he certainly will be missed if we can have a moment of silence for him as well. Thank you.
Yeah, man.
He was extremely, Paul Davis was extremely instrumental in correcting the problems with the transportation dangers.
Good man.
Okay, our next public workshop will be Tuesday, February 27th at 10:30 a.m. in this room. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, February 28th, 10:30 a.m., also in this room. Madam Clerk, roll.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated February 14th, 2024, and accept and approve the video recordings of the February 14th, 2024 regular meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to receive the fiscal officer's certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with a proposed issue of notes in a principal amount not to exceed $380,000 to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the costs of expanding and improving the water system in the county, including but not limited to the Prosperity Waterline Project 5-W-15.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to receive the fiscal officer's certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with a proposed issue of notes in a principal amount not to exceed $282,500 to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the costs of expanding and approving the water system in the county, including but not limited to the Elm Road Water Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to receive the fiscal officer's certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with a proposed issue of notes in a principal amount not to exceed $800,000 to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the costs of the replacement of elevators in the county's administration building.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $1,462,500 for the purposes of retiring outstanding bond anticipation notes issued in 2023 for various purposes and paying issuance costs of the notes.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to receive the fiscal officer's certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with a proposed issue of notes in a principal amount not to exceed $4,366,000 to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improvements to various county buildings and paying issuance costs, including the following: improvements to the county engineer garage, replacing windows at the county's Job and Family Services Building, constructing, reconstructing, equipping, and otherwise improving the county's stone building, and constructing, reconstructing, equipping, furnishing, and otherwise improving the county engineer's office building.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cant-
I'd like to have discussion on this. The cost for all of these improvements is so high largely because there was no effort on the county's part to actually ma- make a preventative maintenance plan. So when we ignore improvements and when we ignore repairs until the point where they fall apart, it ends up costing more. And I would urge the board to consider what I've been proposing for, well, since I got elected, which would be to grade the buildings so that we can track them and do better at preventative maintenance.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $4,366,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of constructing, reconstructing, equipping, and otherwise improving various county buildings, together with all necessary appurtenances, and paying issuance costs in connection therewith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nine is to receive the fiscal officer's certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with a proposed issue of notes in a principal amount not to exceed $750,000 to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay certain costs of the construction of approximately 10,900 linear feet of gravity collection sewers, approximately 43 sanitary manholes, and approximately 350,000 gallons per day wastewater treatment plant to serve service numerous constructs in Warren Township in the county, including paying engineering costs and all necessary appurtenances thereto, known as the Meadow Brook Sanitary Sewer Project.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 10 is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $750,000 for the purpose of paying certain costs of the Meadow Brook Sanitary Sewer Project and paying issuance costs in connection therewith.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 11 is to receive the fiscal officer's certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with a proposed issue of notes in a principal amount not to exceed $500,000 to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the costs of the expanding and improving of water system in the county, including the construction of a water mainline extension to provide public water service to various properties along State Road and State Route 305 in Champion and Southington Townships, known as the State Road Water Regionalization Project.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 12 is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $500,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of the State Road Water Regionalization Project and paying issuance and issuance costs in connection therewith.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 13 is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute on behalf of the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, the annual federal equitable sharing agreement and certification report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Do you have a change in the language from yesterday?
No.
It says agreement. Did you just say agreement?
Annual Federal Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification Report, same as it said yesterday.
Okay, because I reached out to them to find out about the agreement because I see the certi- I got a copy of the certification report and an explanation for that, but I didn't hear enough back about an agreement. So I didn't know if it was two things or one thing because he only responded to one. So I thought maybe there was a correction. There's not, it's still closed. I'm sorry. Okay.
Is so your vote?
Oh, because I only have half of it and I didn't get to see the agreement portion. I'll just abstain because I didn't get all the information.
Item number 14 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, and that is Jonathan Saxton and Village Energy Cooperative.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 15 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the special equal supplier fleet permit for fleet vehicles requested by the companies listed, and those companies are Carrilla Contractors, Inc. and Michael W. Sattlemeyer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 16 is to authorize the purchase of one 1993 Ford F-700 bucket truck to be purchased from Brookfield Township in the amount of $15,000.
Motion, motion to accept.
Approve. I second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 17 is to concur with the Trumbull County Engineer and authorize the lease purchase of the vehicles as listed from Allstate Ford of Youngstown for the total purchase price of $265,432 with a lease purchase agreement for a four-year term at 4.88% interest.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 18 is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to sign as owners the plat for the statutory dedication of Educational Highway as prepared and presented with a resolution to adopt Educational Highway in Champion Township, Trumbull County, Ohio, as part of Trumbull County's road system.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 19 is to adopt a resolution for the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to approve the O R C 555-3.31 statutory dedication of Educational Highway, County Highway 1321, in Champion Township, Trumbull County, Ohio, as part of Trumbull County's road system.
Motion to approve.
I'm second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number 20 is to authorize Tacy Bond, Director, Trumbull County 911, to enter into a lease agreement with ComDoc for the leasing of six new multipurpose copy-scanned fax printers. The lease is for a 60-month period in the amount of $284 per month. The lease is for six new machines and serviced for two smaller units currently in use, and the equipment has been approved by the Trumbull County Data Board.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
This is the same. This is the same, just a different number, right?
Correct.
Yes. I mean-
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 21 is to approve the updated purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of the warranty deeds, easement, and temporary easements from CSX Transportation, Inc. in the amount of $175,000, and to allow the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to sign the updated purchase and sale agreement for the Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail Phase Four, Project ID 99804, located in Howland and Weathersfield Townships and Warren and Niles Cities. The acreage being purchased and the amount of purchase remains the same. The update was necessary as CSX Transportation's legal counsel required a language change within the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 22 is to approve the personnel action for the reclassification of chief auto technician within the Trumbull County Vehicle Maintenance Department. This position is currently held by Mr. Christopher Smith, pay range 10, step 25 years at the hourly rate of $34.5154, and the new rate will be at pay range 11, step 25 years at the hourly rate of $37.7445 effective February 26, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number 23 is to enter into a non-reimbursable extension agreement for the extension of a sanitary sewer in accordance with O R C Section 307.73 with John P. Robinson, managing member of Robinson Real Estate Investments, LLC, on Lee Road, Brookfield Township, Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Metropolitan Subdistrict, known as Lee Road Sanitary Sewer Extension, Project Number 9-S-22, subject to the approval of the Prosecutor's Office.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 24 is to designate the following listed professional design firms as prequalified pursuant to O R C 153.68 for the purposes of future professional design projects for Trumbull County Water and Sewer, sanitary sewer projects for the calendar year 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 25 is to adopt a resolution to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation Office of Transit Specialized Transportation Program Subaward Grant Agreement Amendment for ODOT Project Number S P E M-0408-018-231 Contract. Amendment is necessary to extend the end date and update the amounts as listed for the ODOT C Y 2023 grant.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number 26 is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed to M J D Excavating, Inc. for the P Y 2022 C D B G Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan Act, Project One, Activity One, Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connections, located in Weathersfield Township.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 27 is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed letter for Pollard Land Services, Inc. for the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project, Weathersfield Township, funded through P Y 2022 C D B G Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan Act.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 28 is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed letter to TK Excavating for the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Connections Project, Weathersfield Township, Ohio, funded through the P Y 2022 C D B G Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan Act.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 29 is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed letter for Express Underground for the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Household Project, Weathersfield Township, funded through the P Y 2022 C D B G Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan Act.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item 30, these are routine liquor permit transfers, and the first one is V V Wine Partners, LLC, doing businesses Barrel 33 and Patio to J K B 33, LLC and Patio. And the second is the transfer for Staybones Sports and Gaming, LLC, doing businesses Bull and Bear Neighborhood Grill and Tavern to Deli Cafe, Indian Cuisine, and Bar, LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item 31 is to cause all county buildings to be graded with development of a spreadsheet for each building that includes major systems, dates of installation, upgrades, and identification of required upgrades slash repairs, and other applicable information to begin immediately and to begin within 120 days with monthly updates provided to the Board of Commissioners. And within the note at the bottom, referring to past journal actions kept by the clerk as grading buildings, is not an appropriate accessible document to aid in preventative maintenance.
Motion to approve.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay, at this time, I'd make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to R C 121.22G3 for a conference with an attorney for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners concerning disputes involving the board that are the subject of pending or imminent court action within the sanitary engineer's department. Is there a second?
Second.
On discussion, I received about these last few items, nothing about what has been going on. As a commissioner, I believe that all of us should know what's going on. And secondly, what I received was from Gary Newbrow telling me that they had a tentative agreement that Matt Blair had reached, and Matt Blair is not the attorney nor the legal counsel for the Board of Commissioners. This should have been handled through our legal counsel, who is the prosecutor's office, and I have no idea what's been going on, and it is completely unacceptable for pending litigation to be going on in the county without every member of the Board of Commissioner being a Board of Commissioners being intimately aware of it through correspondence and to not include the prosecutor's office. You know, I would have liked for the prosecutor's office to, I hope they are going to come into our executive session because truly, I actually got a copy of Matt Blair's job description, and it's geared towards personnel matters.
Commissioner, we already had a, we already had an executive session on this, and you were in on it with Matt Blair and the prosecutor, and this is just to follow up to the previous one we already had about two months ago.
He already discussed this at an executive session.
Again, that's not his job. I mean, we-
You were in the meeting when we tasked him with working the agreement out inside of the meeting, and then we talked about it out here to do that.
Are we in the meeting when what?
You were in the meeting when we had the last meeting, and then we came out, we made decisions out here in regards to that.
You know, you're not allowed to discuss anything that happened in an executive session.
I'm talking about the results of the executive session. The results of it.
Okay.
But can we, maybe we should go in the back, is there a second?
To clarify this, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, Matt Blair was appointed by resolution to handle these issues that we are doing.
Right, correct. In a vote of us.
Yes.
There was.
Yes, there was. It was a couple of months ago, Attorney Danzo, is that true?
So.
Yeah. It, yes. Yes.
What specific situation is?
I gotta go into executive session and talk about it.
Has to do with collections.
Oh, we had a journal action in order to-
Yes.
For collection, but nothing about nego- nothing about negotiating, just to pursue them.
Collections has to do with lawsuits. Yes.
I understand.
Right.
But there's no-
Okay.
We didn't take the role for that to negotiate.
Go ahead.
Okay, so item 32 to enter an executive session, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Are legal counsels coming by?
Yes, they are.
Okay, yes. It was blowing, me too, it blows my hair. I don't like any of it up here.
Thank you.
That's the only one?
That's it.
What's that one?
Oh, these are pages two, three, and four.
Oh, these are pages two, three, and four that show the, um, further.
Do you have an image of this that you could send me?
Yes, yes, oh yeah, yeah, I will do that.
That's what I would like to see.
Yep. We have to do it, um.
We were just discussing this, uh, yesterday about, um, or they were discussing it, it said about, about, um, requesting federal, I'm sorry, state transportation improvement district to address the bridge and some of the other stuff, so I kind of want to look at that.
All right, I will get that to you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Wait a minute, wait.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to R C one, twenty-one dot twenty-two G three for the conference with an attorney for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners concerning disputes involving the board that are the subject of pending or imminent court action within the Sanitary Engineers Department. Is there a second?
A second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Uh, and then I'm going to motion tenor into executive session pursuant to R C one, twenty-one dot twenty-two G three for a conference with an attorney for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners concerning disputes involving the board that are the subject of pending or imminent court action within the Sanitary Engineers Department.
Second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, this is something that we should have gotten ahead of our meeting. Uh, you know, everything else and, and to Lisa, if, if there's an executive session on, please obtain that information for us too, so that we could review it instead of just getting it thrown at us during the executive session. Just as if, and just with every other, every other agenda item that comes in, and Alex has given instructions that they send over all the information, um, just putting an agenda item on for an executive session without giving the information is not adequate. Doesn't matter if it's Gary Newbrow or whoever.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to, excuse me, everyone. Make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to R C one, twenty-one dot twenty-two G three for a conference with an attorney for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners concerning disputes involving the board that are the subject of pending or imminent court action within the Sanitary Engineers Department. Is there a second?
Second.
And then discussion, discussion again. This is absolutely unacceptable, Gary Newbrow and Lisa. Whenever something comes over to us, every single agenda item is, it's not supposed to be added to our agenda at all unless we have the supporting information about it. This just came on our agenda without anything being given to us. And because these employees do what they want without regard to policy, they know that they'll never get written up or verbally warned. They continue to do things, it's just not okay. There's no reason that we should have two complaints, agreements, cost estimates all thrown at us during an executive session when we should be getting these things sent over at the right time, which is when it's being requested to be put on the agenda. And I would hope that our H R person would, would see that that was not the way things are supposed to happen and take some type of action, even though, you know, the board might say, let everyone do what they want. We have to actually do things the right way.
Well, I, I would concur somewhat because you added item number thirty-one about grading the buildings and you provided us with zero background information on who's going to grade it, how they're going to grade it, how you're going to rate it. You just threw an item out, out there with zero background information for Commissioner Cantalamaesa and myself to review other than your agenda item you put out there. You did the exact same thing yourself.
I'm not your employee. I am a commissioner. This is something that we've discussed months ago and you're not going to gaslight, deflect and change the subject.
I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, you just did the same thing.
We have.
Same exact thing you did.
We have employees who are not following procedure, who are not, who have all this information that just withheld it because they just felt like they didn't need to follow any type of procedure. I put something on the agenda completely different for us to discuss that we've already discussed, but you guys don't want to do anything in a proper, proper way. No, that's, that's enough, really.
I didn't even say anything.
Need to do is make the employees work, make them.
But sure, can I say something, please? So what we got back there, all of us got at the same time. It's a packet of information, can I please speak? It's a packet of information that, uh, is for our review that will be on the journal next week. That'll be on the agenda next week. We have a week to review this information. That's exactly what the executive session is for, Commissioner.
No, executive session.
Some of this is confidential information.
Session is for us to.
Can I please finish?
I'm talking about.
No, Commissioner, Lisa has the floor.
Incorrect. Executive session is not for us to just receive information. It is for us to discuss things.
It's a pending.
Correct, and you could discuss them. It was explained to you in executive session, all of this.
An executive session that does not give us ample time to review and read everything.
We don't vote on it until next week.
What you guys just did is exactly what you do in those.
Never mind.
Blind leading the blind workshops where you just come in, sit down, let someone tell you, stick something in your face and tell you what they think about it. We should have an opportunity to review and digest what we're going into executive session about.
We aren't voting on that.
It doesn't matter, we should have had the opportunity to review it.
Can't decide anything in executive session anyway, you're going to have a week to decide.
That's neither here nor there. What, what I'm saying is that shouldn't have been placed on the agenda without us at least reviewing it and knowing what we're going back there about.
You were just trying to start fights.
We did not have enough, look, I read every single damn thing that I get that's put on the agenda. Every contract, every word of every single document. And this is something.
And that's, that's wrong, that's wrong. You said in the last couple of meetings, you didn't get this, you didn't open your email, you didn't, you couldn't find a piece of paper.
What is?
Yesterday that you got, so don't say you read it all.
What is my packet, I read every word of, we didn't get.
Let's move on, please.
Let's move on.
You have a week to decide this, you have a week to decide, you have a week to do all the, the information is in front of you now.
This a week ago.
The information is in front of you right now.
See, everything on the agenda is supposed to be sent to us on Thursday.
The commissioners received this at the same time you did, the board of commissioners.
Doesn't matter.
You receive it in executive session.
It should have been sent to us.
Discussing in executive session.
Us on Thursdays. Don't do this again.
Gary, majority of the board has no problem with exactly what you did.
We have a week, we have a week to do the research on this.
You can do what you want according to, according to them. You can violate policies, you could do whatever.
Policies, you violate the, the social media policy, you violate the bullying harassment policy. Start following the policies yourself before you tell everybody else the policies.
I, again.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda items for today. Do we have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
I do want to ask about, um, because I had someone reach out to me. Who, does anyone know Christie, Christine Novicki or who's associated with that, um, Vianna Historical Society Incorporated? We just awarded them sixty, I think it was sixty thousand dollars and they got the check. And, and the person who applied for that and was coming and advocating for that was Jeff Ford. And someone brought it to my, two constituents brought it to my attention that he was, um, the one who stole from a safe uh, when, and had, was forced to resign when he was a police officer. They had to bring in lie detector tests, pol, I'm sorry, a polygraph. All trustees said that all passed except the polygraph, except for, uh, two officers and Jeff Ford was named. Now he's the person who is advocating and receiving the money from Trumbull County with the ARPA funds. And I just want to make sure that, who is doing the oversight to make sure that the funds are being sent.
Commissioner, you're bringing up something from two thousand and eleven? The same year that you were arrested for disorderly conduct and you had a temporary protection order put against you? The exact same year, but you're going to dig up something on Mr. Ford from two thousand and eleven to trash him, muddy him in the public's eye here. He's not a treasurer of that organization. If you look up the Vianna Historical Society, he does not handle the money.
In my ear.
Okay, you're bringing up BS here to try to, to try to degrade and slander an employee of the county because he stood up to you for your nine-one-one calls. And you're bringing up something from fourteen years ago, the same year that you were arrested for disorderly conduct.
What, what, that's not even true.
It is true, you want to see the police record or you're getting.
Let's get the police record.
What we're talking about is ARPA money that's being spent without any type of oversight that I am aware of. I went back and asked.
The board, the. Society has a board of.
You approved it, Commissioner.
I understand, but I just found out by talking to someone in our office that once the check is gone, the check is gone and we don't have the ability to see, we don't have anything in place to make sure, uh, or to oversee how the money's being spent. There's nothing that's, uh, planned out.
We, we report everything, we report everything and all the, all the things back to, back to the federal government. Shara does that.
Yes, that, but I understand that, but.
They ask all those questions, how that money's being spent.
And, and what relevance it has for one person that's part of a board that got the money?
All there is.
That was not convicted of anything.
Oh, yeah, well, sometimes they'll say, like in this case, that if you leave and resign, then we won't prosecute you.
So this is the person that came here and stood up to you about the nine-one-one call and now you're trying to trash them publicly.
Right, one week later.
Something over to.
And this is what she does to employees.
That he may or may not have any, any oversight over, you're just trying to bring up his name to muddy his name.
No.
And he's a citizen.
No.
Not an elected official, by the way.
Guys, I actually received a couple of complaints from people calling me. One of them was related to the, the person who was.
Well, if you receive them, that's public information. Who, provide the name.
Please, please provide the name to the rest of the board, I'd like to talk to them.
Was associated with the block watch, who was a relative, called me and said that this is the background.
Okay, provide that information to the board publicly and to the media on who called you. There is no anonymity when it comes to that, if you want to have a valid complaint.
There, there's no anonymity with, uh, releasing public records too, which needs to be, uh, without a request, which needs to be investigated over at nine-one-one as well.
Don't know anything about that.
Of course.
Public records can be asked via word too, it doesn't have to be written.
We have situations where people tip.
As soon as you dial nine-one-one, the whole world has scanners, they hear it, it's public immediately.
Situation.
Immediately, all thirty of your calls last year are public.
Nadine Grimley told me that someone from nine-one-one tipped her off and then she had to send them a. Nadine Grimley told me that someone from nine one one tipped her off and then she had to send them a public records request. So.
But it's all public records.
It doesn't matter. Our policy says that no one.
We don't follow policies. We're commissioners, according to you.
The employees are the ones violating it. So the.
They don't have first amendment rights.
No one can share.
The average.
These are all public records.
Interrupting me. No one is, everyone, every employee in the county pursuant to policy is forbidden from sharing. Anything that can only be obtained through public records request without a public records request. And there has been a pattern of that not actually happening. And I believe that that needs to be looked into, but. I understand the political nature of you two and a lot of department heads. So.
The only thing political is you trying to stop public records from getting out there.
Sword of disrupt the corrupt. You're trying to politicize this meeting. You're trying to attack an employee. We're not going to stand for it here. We're going to move on. We're not going to put the board in any more jeopardy of lawsuits. We've already had enough of those in the county.
Let me read this, son. If you, I mean.
We're not going to read it. We're going to move forward. We're not going back. If you want to read stuff, we'll get into that whole reading thing. We'll be here for days.
This does relate to the spending of our money and we do need to make sure that there is proper oversight. If we've got some.
So you're accusing the Viano Historical Society of being corrupt.
No, but I'm saying if there's someone associated with it who's handling the money and I don't know who.
You don't even know. You don't even know. You're just throwing out his name.
Which is why I brought it. Please stop screaming.
Okay, well, you're you're throwing allegations out there that are baseless. You're you are throwing allegations that are baseless.
Not baseless. This person has a history of stealing.
History fourteen years ago. You have a history of domestic violence. You have a history of drug abuse. You have a history of lots of things.
You you honest to God, you you can get.
There was a police report this year from your son that you stole his drugs. It's on file with the Warren Police Department.
You know.
That's public information. He said you signed for and stole his Adderall. It's a public.
It's a public document, everyone.
Absolutely wrong. And you, it's one thing when.
It's on file with the Warren Police Department.
People are public officials. There are, there's latitude and you can criticize people at some level and make things up that might not be true, but when you attack someone's character and.
You've attacked people's families. You've attacked how their physical appearances. Commissioner, you're the one who started all this. And then when people respond to you.
Sue you again. I'm serious.
Yeah.
No, seriously, if you want to make things up about me, I will sue you again.
Make things up. It's a, it's in a police report, Commissioner. Everybody has seen it.
Police or anyone with the with the, anyone can make a police report. That doesn't.
Anyone can make a police report? Usually a police officer does.
Right. Yeah, anyone could, anyone could go and make a report, just like our our ladies have before in our office and none of them have come back true. Like that is a normal thing that happens. So just because there's a report doesn't mean that it's true.
And just because you heard somebody.
Sixteen twenty eleven, a temporary protection order was issued by the court. And there is, that is fact. That's not a report. That is a judge, a action by the court. Okay, we're going to move on.
I will.
Good morning.
You guys might catch another lawsuit.
My name is Deb Roth. I sent a a letter to the commissioners back on the fifteenth of February. Asking you to support the township trustees. Asking you to assist with the funding for the study with the engineer that you guys heard last night. I'm sure after hearing the concerns that he expressed and validated what we've been saying all along. That the commissioners would place the health and safety of the community.
I'm prepared to act on that.
Of the utmost importance, along with the fact that it is going to impact county roads. So it impacts the county as a whole as well. You know, we'd ask.
I think the only, and I don't mean to cut you off, Debbie, but I told you this yesterday. I think the only way we're going to get to the bottom of this is with an independent study and looking at alternatives. And that's, I don't know if that's been done. And this is a way, if this study comes back and says, you know, they're right or. Or there are alternatives, whatever it may be. At least we're going to know the answer to that. And I think judging by that community yesterday and the passion and the and the. And the people that were there, and that's just a fraction of the people. You know, they're 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 up in arms and we have to do something collectively as a board. There are constituents. So we can't just ignore them. So I'm prepared to move on.
So. This is something that should have happened a long time ago and. And I think it's already moving forward. To be honest, I mean, we we saw and we heard that John Brown and that board have already started. It's already going. Forward. I don't know if they could put the brakes on it. He he's publicly said that that's what he intends to do is. You know, he he's looking out for. What he believes he wants. And so even if we do it like, and I agree with doing it, I just kind of, I think that. It it's honestly, I I feel like if they they could have listened to you guys years ago, they could have listened to you last year instead of not showing up to meetings and. And just because now he's running for office, he's he showed up and then, but at the same time refused to answer. But it's but said that it's still moving forward. I would really like to see you guys get something in there. But the point is, I I is it going to be a waste of time? I mean, he's here right now, but he still won't speak for. He won't speak to his opinion, which is absolutely. What the opinion of, he agrees with what they're doing. He said it on numerous occasions. So I don't know how you get them to stop.
Our response to this, quite frankly, is I understand you're asking what can you do? Number one, you can approve and make a motion right now to approve. The thirty thousand dollars for the study to get the independent study. And number two. I I think you need to get their attention and make a motion that if they don't put the brakes on this project, we cancel the funding that you've given them. That's taxpayer money. And I know we don't want to impact all the parks. But this does impact all the parks.
They are open to alternative methods. They've said that. John has said that, speaking for his board, that they will entertain. Any and all different.
I would like to ask my board members, and I brought this up to Debbie yesterday. I'd like to have another meeting hosted by the board of commissioners so we can talk and we get an input and we can run the meeting ourselves. A special meeting and we we invite and mandate that our executive director, the park board be there. And we asked that the park board itself be there. Zach doesn't work for us?
No, he doesn't.
Not at all.
Are you that stupid?
We fund them though.
We do we give his budget? Do we sign his paycheck?
He works for the the, he works for, he works, Zach Savette works for the Metro Park.
We're either going to try to be a part of the solution or we're going to continue to make roadblocks. Let's try to work together.
I make a motion right here from the floor to rescind our journal action last, our our journal action last week. Giving them access to our prosecutor's office for a dollar because that creates a conflict of interest.
Not even using them for them.
For Warren Township who has to pay full price for the use of the prosecutor's office. And I don't think that's right. If you want to do that.
Wait, what?
Stop. Let's show that we're not going to allow them to have access to our prosecutor's office for a dollar. The you guys approved it. I'm the only one who voted no on that. And I think that that would be the first step in trying to twist their arm that they act so that they'll actually listen to their community.
So they will hire outside counsel.
And we will pay for it. We will pay for it.
At hundreds of dollars an hour instead of a dollar for a year.
Action instead of your lip service, guys. I made a.
That's not action. That's that's going to do nothing. That does nothing to solve the problem. Nothing. It actually creates more problems for our board and paying out more legal fees.
No, because we don't have to.
So routine things with the parks board, we're going to have, we're going to hire outside counsel when we could be saving money using our prosecutor's office. Prosecutor's office isn't even advising them or anything on this scenario here. So it has nothing to do with it. They have their own attorney.
I just don't want to see lip service. This has been going on so long and people.
Then approve the study.
I have.
That's what, that's what's actually going to happen and do something.
Suggestion is get rid of the, get rid of the judge. Honest to God. It's not us. It's the probate judge. Why don't you get your group of people? Because I will come. Oh, I don't know if I can during the day. Go over to his courtroom, hold up a piece of paper or something, you know? That he he runs the park board.
Get Fred Rekka sign with a circle and a slash.
Do something to let him know that, let him know that you that you care, that that you care about that and that you know that it's him. Because just because it's captioned Trumbull County, so many people, including Deb, think that somehow we're we are the ones, but it is him and no one is giving him the grief that he should be. Receiving for what he's been doing and and allowing, reappointing the same people every single year. Someone asked last night at that meeting, how did the people get on the park board? How do they get to apply? Well, they don't. He just reappoints the same people over and over again.
There are some new people on the board since I've been there.
Okay.
There are, I'm just.
Can I address that, please? Under a high revised code fifteen forty-five, we can petition Judge Farica to have every park commissioner removed from that board. And that is an option that we're looking at.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
However, again, could your commissioners please be part of the solution? And approve that thirty thousand dollars for the independent study that will give us all the answers. And please caution the Metro Parks Board because John Brown has made it well known what his opinion is. They've not listened to us for two and a half years and I don't foresee that changing. And they need, you need to tell them they need to wait until that study's back and you can assure the safety and the things that we've been bringing up that that engineer last night. Told you we have valid concerns that are credible.
So we have ten thousand dollars already committed from our engineer.
We need thirty thousand.
We need thirty thousand and I'd like, if the if the, did my motion die for lack of a second to. Supposed to be running a meeting, so just attacking. Yeah, obviously. So. And so then I'll make a motion for, did you file an ARPA application? Because I know Warren Township only received about sixty thousand dollars.
They did not file an ARPA application on this. This is new, relatively new. They can, I'm sure that the township can do that. However, we don't want to delay this study any further because. The time constraints of what Trumbull Metro Parks Board are real and evident to us. It needs to stop before they take that out.
If the thing is, is we have to make sure that it's it's allowable for an expenditure because it would be a study. Hang on a second. It's a study for something that the, it would be a study for something that the. Board of Commissioners don't own or control. And that's the same situation with the with the. Mosquito Lake and what was going on because it's owned by another entity. But I, if there is a way that our prosecutor's office could say that that's eligible for us to to spend, I absolutely want to.
The Trumbull County Board of Commissioners doesn't own the properties that are affected by the FEMA issue right now and you approved a study for that. We know that this can be approved. Please, someone make a motion to approve thirty thousand dollars.
Pending pending our prosecutor's approval. Yeah, of course.
For the thirty thousand dollars for the.
Didn't you say we couldn't go to the meeting because if any votes resulted in what you saw at the meeting yesterday, it'd be a violation?
No, honey, you are so dumb.
That's what you said yesterday. That's why you said I shouldn't go because if we learned anything there and we made a motion that resulted in pending action, it would be illegal.
No, you have no.
Make your motion then.
Let me, let me just explain and 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 I already talked to the attorney and he wants to give you guys a training because of your lack of understanding. But what we can't do is we can obtain information, but we can't discuss things ourselves that would lead to making that that decision. So by going there and just sitting and hearing what happened, that was perfectly fine.
That's exactly what I said yesterday and you disagreed with me.
I know. I said no discussion. Mara was talking about going and discussing discussing.
It was in the workshop and we sat right there and talked about it yesterday.
Okay. So I will again make that motion for the thirty thousand dollars for the study that was proposed by. I don't have the engine. Do I have the engineering firm?
DLZ.
DLZ. Contingent upon the us being permitted to use that funding by our prosecutor's office.
I will second, even though that's not thorough. Motion, but I understand, we understand the gist of it.
And discussion, will you want the funds to come from where?
That's the other thing.
Fund dollars, sales tax money.
And I would, I would wonder if the of our prosecutor's office can give us better language for that motion because since they're in.
Of course, but but I I guess. Do we have at least in 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 discussing here, at least an agreement by the board members? That we should consult with the prosecutor's office as to a mechanism to assist Warren Township with this study. Can we agree on that? Because I don't want to do something, put something on the agenda and he says, no, you can't do it that way.
He's sitting here. Can we ask him?
That's what I said.
He's not going to give us legal advice on the fly.
Unless he knows or.
He'll, are you, I I don't want to speak for you, but.
We need a microphone bell. This is important. Tammy, you got a microphone for him or?
Got to make sure that there's no conflict. The question is, do you have a conflict of interest to?
It's a, it's a possibility that we do and we've we've made that clear and we've talked about that. And during one of our meetings, the commissioners had even discussed that if there is, this may be a situation where outside counsel is necessary to advise everybody. Because there's been threats of litigation already. There has been proposals for litigation. I don't know how deep we can get into that if those if those things are hanging out there as a possibility. Now, that being said, it we can explore that. We can try to help the board. If not, we would have to notify you guys that you might need to get outside counsel to look into this.
Why don't we do that?
That, but hang on, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to rescind the action by having you be their legal counsel. Because if you weren't their legal counsel, then there wouldn't be a conflict.
The other issue is that 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 it may already be too late in that we have represented Metro Parks for for years.
Same thing with Helen. We did. We couldn't. Release them from legal counsel without thirty days notice and giving them fair time to wrap things up. We can't just fire them today.
Times where our our ethical obligations are such that if we've been working with a client and learned anything that could be useful. Against that client when representing another one, we still have a conflict situation. So sometimes it's not just present where you cut, you cut off representation and the conflict. Conflict is clear. That's not always the case. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm just suggesting that there may be an issue with that.
So can we, can I make a motion to modify that to not just include the prosecutor's office, but to Tanya from our other legal counsel? Just because she wouldn't have a conflict.
Who approves the ARP money now?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
Conflict of anything. They approve all the stuff anyway.
No.
You're talking ARPA money, but we have.
Making, I'm modifying the motion to add. In addition to our prosecutor's office and our ARPA council.
Okay. Will this be an ARPA ask?
Well, that that we didn't, did we, we didn't.
He said general, general funds is what Mara's motion was.
I think I made the motion and I didn't say, I didn't specify the funds. That was an additional question that you had. Our motion didn't say that. My, the motion. You asked the question.
I said, where are the funds going to come from? And Commissioner Kamalasis said general funds.
The motion, please.
You got to be kidding me.
No, that's what the clerk's supposed to do is write down. Maybe the, maybe the press has a copy. Did you write down what the motion was? It's awful, but clerk's supposed to make note of the motion.
What are the options for?
It's really the main job.
We we have our auditor here because she can clarify some of the financial.
So we we do have options as far as general fund money, sales tax money, those kinds of things. There's money there. That's, this isn't a huge expense. I will say, if you're looking at ARPA, a couple of caveats here, right? You have, you guys have a lot of money promised. You'll, you're not, you're getting, you're dwindling down. Second, we're having difficulty with our attorney. Getting things through and getting the that eligibility stuff done. We have. I think I don't have my sheet right here. We have six right now that are pending. We just asked for information about where we're at on those. She's out of the office till next week. So if you're looking at something that you wanted to be done expeditiously, I would not recommend ARPA at this point. As far as, you know, I I don't want to get into the conflict on this, but you know, you have. You know, you can't keep adding to the ARPA pile. I'm just going to say that. It's eventually, it it ain't going to be there. Also, when you're trying to look to get something done in a timely manner, I don't think ARPA is a great choice.
I agree. I agree.
And it's a de minimis enough ask. Not de minimis. I shouldn't say that.
But it's a reasonable enough ask.
Scheme of things. It's not a huge ask. It's something that we could find money for. But you guys need to decide if it's legal for us to spend money in that.
And I just want to be clear. There's a number of things that that I think are are not being made clear here. First of all, the ARPA funds are approved by outside counsel, not the prosecutor's office. That keeps getting thrown out there, but it's not true. The other thing is Warren Township doesn't pay full price for the prosecutor's office. They they actually pay nothing. It's part of our statutory role that you guys budget us for to perform work for our statutory township clients. So those those things are out there. And just to be clear again, and I think we had this this discussion a couple of weeks ago. There is a perception sometimes that the commissioners have overarching authority over the entire territory of the county. That is not the case. There is a specific statutory definition of the role of the commissioners. And I'm not saying that you can't do this. I'm not saying that you can at this point. What I'm saying is that there are statutorily defined roles that you guys have. And funds can only be spent on clear authority of law. So that's where you guys are asking the right questions. Can it be done? And then that's where we get into the point, can our office answer or are we prevented from answering? We can cross that bridge if the commissioners want to go that route.
Let's start that. Let's start there.
And the other thing is, or we could just completely. Clear this up. We have the only attorney that comes to mind that is extremely capable of determining that was just here. And he, we we could also, if we wanted to. And he um, we we could also, if we wanted to right now, say that we, I don't know if we're allowed to do this. An anticipation of a a conflict, we could use uh Mr. Wilson from Constock, Stock, Springer Wilson. I think he's really competent and deals with land and things.
I I don't disagree, but at the same time, to be financially prudent and to 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 see, I think we should ask our prosecutor's office first if they can assist us for for free, for free.
To find that out, though.
Like, I mean, if we get the opinion to you, how long, Bill? I mean, I know you're inundated, but.
And then if, and then if it is okay, then you'll have it, you'll have it back with about a week because I know that the the engineering firm can have their study done within a month. As long as we prove it. With. So you'd be able to have the opinion back in a week or just let us know if there's a conflict in a week?
Because essentially we'd be using county funds that were statutorily mandated to fund our jail, our 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 dog pound, all the things that we have to fund. We're, if we use those funds for any other purpose other than that, it's, it gets dicey.
You also, you also fund for the county roads and this removal can impact those county roads, was what the engineer said. I just want to throw that out.
But we don't fund the roads.
It it could in fact, it could impact the um, the water and sewer projects as well. All of these work together. So I'm I'm thinking that we probably could, even though it's not necessarily property that we own because of the impact there with our utilities. Hopefully.
I think we're all in agreement. I think we're all in agreement on that. I mean, we we've seen the need out there from these residents. We got to act on something. I mean, and there's 840 more or 740 more signatures out there that are that are, you know, one, at least one answers. And I think that's the problem is that when people don't feel heard, and I don't think you guys have felt heard in a long time, that's when the animosity starts. But I I do, I do commend John Brown for coming yesterday. It was a hostile environment and he was there and he deserves a lot of praise for for the courage he showed and and just showing up. And that's a good start. But at the same time, we need to get, we need to continue to communicate here or else, you know, and and continue to share information. And if that means sharing a new study to, for them to potentially look at, I'm for it.
Problem I have too was that Eastgate was there and they're driving this. And they, you see their faces and they, Eastgate was sitting there. Is there a way that we can get Eastgate uh to communicate? Do they come to the parks boards meeting or can we?
The parks board meeting room is the size of my kitchen and you could fit 10 people in there. It's not, it's not conducive to this kind of meeting.
And and.
That's probably why.
And for the record too, they do have a meeting today at 4:15 at the park board on North River Road near the old airport. The public is invited to go to that and there was an invitation from Mr. Brown yesterday for any Warren Township resident, any commissioner, anybody that's interested in this to attend their meeting today to watch him deliver the notes from last night and then present it to their board, the opposition side that he heard last night.
And again, 4:15 isn't conducive to us getting people there either.
And the, and the one who was taking the most notes were the people from Eastgate. And the expressions on their faces, you just really wanted to know what it looked like they just submit to my eyes. It looked like they disagree with doing anything uh to stop what they already have in progress.
Let's not judge that by that. I mean, we can't, we can't read that.
They were invited to speak last night, I think on two occasions and they.
They weren't the people to speak. They said they were just there to collect data. They weren't the the contacts for that program.
So are we going to make a motion pending the?
We already did.
There's, there's two scrambled motions. Somebody make a new motion. Those are two jumbled.
That, the motion was already made the first time.
Right, that one died for lack of a second.
She made a second. No, it's even, he seconded it.
The second one he seconded, the first one died.
Right.
So Ms. French.
I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that it's clear. So I I know the intent is clear, so that I I'll second it.
Yeah, and for the record, like seriously, we're supposed to be writing down there.
So the, so the mo, just for, just, okay, just for clarity, I make a motion, just for clarity, so it's on the record. Make a motion to.
But during, exactly, the clerk is supposed to, don't say you don't know what it is either.
We have the minutes on here, legal minutes on our video. We can refer back to the video.
Start writing out motions.
Okay, can we please just make the motion, do something?
Clarity, make a motion pending legal approval uh to to assist with funding.
We already said that.
Okay, I'm just, whatever, I'm just trying to make it clear.
Repeat it for clarity purposes, please.
Of course.
She's, the clerk's supposed to repeat the the motion.
You should submit them in writing then. Maybe from now on, we submit all all pushes in writing.
We just want to get from point A to point B. We get a motion and get a roll call on it.
Move forward. We don't have a court uh.
Call the roll and moving forward, please write down all motions.
So just make sure that it's pending legal.
I already said that.
Okay, I'm just.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How does they get on the judge too? Can you just?
Okay.
Okay, Anderson, Warren Township trustee. I really want to thank you for all three of you for coming out last night and I'm sure listening to you talk just now, you saw the impact. And and we did have 829 signatures in just a couple of days. So that was just the tip of the iceberg, which you saw last night. And Commissioner Ketch, Melissa, you are right. Look, we, Warren Township has felt for years that we are lower on on the totem pole than anybody. And we don't get much out there, but we did get a prison from Warren City, which wasn't the best neighbor. And then we got a landfill behind our administration building where our police officers couldn't even stay in the building. And we spent two and a half years fighting that. And I'm standing here today saying, this isn't new news for most people, definitely not for you. Because we have been fighting this for two and a half years and then everything was shut down for a few months. And I was glad to see John Brown there last night and I even brought that up. I believe that we appreciate it because it was a it was kind of a hostile environment, but considering Lewisburg, it wasn't a hostile environment. They, everybody was pretty respectful. And uh on on this matter, I was speaking on behalf of the trustees, going to ask the same thing, that you would help us with this because it was unexpected expense and we're not a rich community. And actually, from sitting here the last couple of weeks, it was watching somebody else ask for $300,000 for something. I really didn't feel that $30,000 was all that much. And we do appreciate Trumbull County Engineer Randy Smith for giving the 10% because that cuts it down. So I don't care what fund you take it out of. I know you have to do things legally. We do too. But I really do appreciate the fact that um you're moving on this because this is the first action in two and a half years that we've received. So uh I am going to Metro Parks. John Brown invited me and I'm going today at 4:15. I know that it's not a big area to have. There was a lot of people that brought up about wanting to go and protest. We kind of tried to nip that in the bud because we don't think at this point that we need to do that. So looks like we're all on the same page. And we'll see how things go today. But I do want to thank the board for taking this in consideration for $30,000. And I think that's pretty much what I have to say. If uh any of you have any questions? Nope. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on behalf of the Goodwells, Trumbull County?
Morning, Commissioners. Alexandra Divan-Juncy Bush, Human Resources Department. I would like to highly advise the board um against, well, just to tell you to tread lightly when it comes to employees of the county, not elected officials, but employees. The definition of retaliation, according to the Department of Labor, occurs when an employee, an employer, excuse me, through their manager, supervisor, administrator or directly takes any adverse action against an employee for engaging in a protected activity. Per page 38 of our Trumbull County Policies and Procedures Manual, a protected activity for classified employees and nonclassified is political activity. Number two under that personnel uh policy says, expressions of opinions, political expressions of opinions, either oral or written, are allowable for employees. Mr. Ford, I I really, I really caution you to tread lightly with this one. He is an employee of this county, as is other employees like Lisa. We are all employees. I'm an employee. We are not elected officials. We don't deserve to be retaliated against. We don't deserve any of this. Furthermore, Mr. Ford was never convicted, to my knowledge. Does anybody have any proof that he was convicted? Because in America, I think that we're guilty until until proven innocent, or you're innocent until proven guilty. Tread lightly, please. Thank you.
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh this, this Miss French, she's not even looking this way. She's already looking over there. She really has been attacking this Ford and it's, and it's, it's just because he spoke out against her. That's all it is. Just like she attacked me because I come in here and spoke out against her. She's made me out to be some Charles Manson stalker. She took me to court over it and she lost. And now she's attacking this Ford because he called her out on her bad behavior, which it's my understanding that since that incident, she's called 911 again. The 911 director's here, isn't she? Isn't that true? Wasn't it just like a couple of days ago on the 18th or something? She made two calls to 911. One call and in that call, didn't she?
The director, this is a comment section. It is not a a conversation between.
I'm asking her for clarification.
It, this is not.
And you're interrupting.
You need to run a meeting the right way.
You need to quit going after employees. You just, you're just sworn.
Address, address the board. You're supposed to be addressing.
It has been established, yes. Yes, she had, she did call again.
Not, you, if you want to come up and talk afterwards, we don't, we don't go and converse converse among each other.
I know, everybody has to follow the rules, but Nikki French, I know.
To come up and attack me, but do it the right way.
Only Nikki French goes away with everything, I know. This is her game to make people out to be bad guys. I heard that even last night when I was attending a Warren Township meeting, which is a public meeting and I have every right to attend, she made a scene after I left and asked somebody to walk her to her car because she was afraid I was out there. Oh my God, the drama queen. This thing with the dog, she's still attacking the neighbor over this dog issue. An issue that in a comment in her own words has been going on for two years. Two years this has been going on with this dog. That is not an emergency every day. You're mad because you're not getting your way. You're mad because the dog is keeping you awake. It's a husky. I've owned one. They're very vocal. They like to be outside. They don't mind the cold. And do you watch that dog 24 hours a day? How do you know that that dog isn't getting food and water? How do you know? Do you keep your eyes on that dog 24/7? Do you know that outside dogs have a tendency to tip their bowls over frequently? Somebody could be watering and feeding that dog and then 10 minutes later, the bowls will be tipped over. She says the dog doesn't have food and water and no shelter and all this, but yet this has been going on two years. This must be a bionic dog. It's still surviving. Enough is enough. Vote this woman out next month before she destroys this county. As far as the dam, I attended that meeting last night and maybe I'm a little off. You can correct me if I am, but it seems to me that, I understand the point of view from both sides. The Metro Parks has something they don't want. Something they feel there's no longer a need for. And they have a three to four million dollar grant handed to them saying, here, use this money to take it away. It's only logical that that's what they're going to want to do. They don't want it. And one way or another, it's going to come out. They're, they're going to lose it whether they give it away to somebody or they take it out. Wouldn't the logical thing be for the Metro Parks to hand it over to Warren Township? Warren Township wants it. It's in Warren Township. That's been, that's been addressed. They want it. And there's concerns of what may happen if the dam comes out. It may affect our fire station. I I mean, that seems like the logicalst thing to me. If you don't want it, just give it to Warren Township. Let them figure out what they're going to do with it. Thank you. Thank you.
Tacey Bond, 911 Director. Uh, just responding to the questions that were posed to me during the question and answer session.
For clarity, this is a public meeting, it's a board meeting for the commissioners. It is not an opportunity for you guys to come up and converse with each other.
I'm not conversing. I'm answering a question that was posed.
She has the floor. She has the floor to say what she wants to say.
That. What, what this meeting is, is a public meeting and you address the board with your comments and your, your concerns.
Perfect. My comments and questions.
Hang on, it is not to go back.
Is it my time or yours?
It's, it's, she has the floor, Commissioner. She has the floor, Commissioner.
Don't want to do that, that's fine.
I will 100% my comments right now, not pertaining to his. And all this drama that has been perpetuated by you and your calls to 911 that you were advised on February 8th to not call 911 any further for non-emergent issues regarding this dog. You were advised then not to call 911. Citizens of this county have been cited for misuse of 911 for less. Since then, you then called 911 again on the 16th. We have had verified public records requests for those calls. Jeff Ford did request through proper channels, the 911 call from the first time when he was trying to deal with a man with a gun and a woman locked in a closet while you were tied up for 911 for eight minutes with him. Then he came to a meeting and voiced his concerns and since then you've tried to drag him through the mud for previous things that may or may not have happened. We don't know that. I wasn't even, hell, I think I was in my twenties then. We all have passed. That is not pertinent to the job he does every day or the job all our dispatchers do every day, handling 235,000 non-emergency calls. They are understaffed, they are underpaid, they are overworked. And now we are dealing with this show. I told you 100%, I was going to stay above the political fray and I've tried to do that. You've accused me of being involved in leaking documents. I can 100% tell you that is not true. I can tell you that no documents have been leaked by my department. You cannot believe that or not believe it. I don't really care. At the end of the day, my simple email to you was to request that you not call 911 and burden our dispatchers with something that was non-emergent. And that was an ongoing issue. That is to be handled by the Dogworn's Office or the Animal Control or whoever handles that for the city of Warren. I have recommended charges be filed for misuse of 911 because you have been worn multiple times and I can't tell that none of the agencies have the backbone to to touch it because nobody wants to deal with this. I don't want to deal with it. Since Tuesday, I have done nothing but deal with this issue. I have other work that you guys are paying me to do that I cannot get done. And I think at the end of the day, you owe Mr. Ford, my dispatchers and myself an apology for attacking us for doing our jobs. There's no politics involved. I couldn't care less what three people are sitting up there. I don't have to respect you as individuals. I have to respect the position. And I was raised to do that. You guys hired me to do a job and I'm trying to do a job. The only priority I have is the citizens of this community, the dispatchers that work for me and our staff.
You said you were appalled that your email was leaked right after you sent it?
Yes.
It was only sent to me. So how was it leaked?
I sent it to five people.
You blind CC'd who? Who all was blind CC'd as well because it was a public records request and I'm waiting for it.
There was no public records request.
It was only I sent you a public records request because.
You sent me a broad request for multiple email, for all my emails, all Jeff's emails. That's too broad for a request.
For a specific short period of time, it is not over broad.
14 days is a bit broad when it comes to emails.
I I will have my attorney send that and and we can add it to our thing. I'm asking you for.
Who I sent it to?
Yes.
I sent it to the Board of Commissioners. I sent it to the Board of Commissioners, HR and my assistant director. So they were in the loop as what was going on because I worked for all three of you.
Blind CC.
You can't tell me how to send an email.
Can't do that.
So you're going to email me and then pretend that you were appalled by it getting leaked out and and immediately posted on social media. How about?
Public record.
If you're saying that you're appalled by that, did you tell Commissioner Malloy you're appalled or him? Because, okay.
I CC'd them on all the emails because I don't want to be involved in the he said, you said.
Sends the one, she sends to all three.
All three, because I worked for all three of you. I worked for a. All three. Because I worked for all three of you. I worked for a board. I do not work for one person. That's how I don't play the games.
So whenever you said that you were appalled that it got leaked out, you failed to tell me, you know what, it wasn't by someone else and I CC'd your board. So it was probably one of them. You did not say that. You made it seem like, you know, it was only conversation between you and I and you were appalled that it got leaked out. Knowing that you had that information and you didn't share it with me, like, hey, Commissioner, it got leaked out. It wasn't by me. I'm appalled by it. Must have been one of your board members. You didn't tell me that until right now. Thanks.
She doesn't have to.
I don't have to, number one. I'm appalled.
You tape and videotape everything and don't tell people what you're doing.
I'm appalled that you left me a voicemail on my office phone telling me what a disappointment I am. And basically threatening my job.
Oh, okay. That is true. That is true.
Did you save the voicemail?
Oh.
That's public record.
I've saved everything that involves these activities because I do not want to be sucked down into the basement of what's going on here. If I was a citizen of this community, I would be appalled at the behavior. No wonder you can't get anything done. Let's behave like adults. I mean, I'm putting a huge target on my back saying these things. It's ridiculous. It is. So now you know I was not involved. We'll be waiting for that apology. Thank you.
You should have disclosed that originally.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
Working with other commissioners to get things negative.
Now you're saying-
You're talking, you're dating, are you?
Yeah.
You're saying she's working with the other commissioners because she CC'd us on an email?
In order to have scathing emails negative toward me leaked out to-
You don't want to write a scathing email, don't put it on paper.
Leaked out.
Anything you touch is public.
Within minutes. So I'm sure there was some instruction. Make sure that you put everything in writing and blind CC me and then all of a sudden it gets-
You're the one that's all about transparency and public records. We're trying to hide a public record now. It's all public record. Everything you put on paper that isn't your health or somebody else's health concern is a public record.
You leaked it immediately right out to social media and that's, that's-
Who leaked it?
You, you or you, someone who was CC'd. Could have been Alex. She's political too. I don't know.
It was not.
We don't know who it was. Okay. Well, who's the-
My HR and I'm investigating this properly.
Are you?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You shouldn't because you have bias. So if you want to call someone outside.
We're talking about investigating a public record here, folks.
Yeah.
What about transparency?
There's clearly bias. She's come up and she's said things about me on a regular basis.
I don't think there's a-
So if you have bias, then you should recuse yourself.
I'm sure. I don't think there's an employee in Trumbull County that doesn't have bias towards you and doesn't worry about being in your targets.
A person who I, I mean, I voted against hiring. It's a longstanding matter of fact that she had not one day of experience in HR and got promoted and her dad worked for 45 years for the county. That's just kind of how things happen. And that's why, wow, trying to change things.
When, when people can't win arguments, they name call and they talk down to people.
Our HR Director, Deputy Employee, I commend you, Alex, for everything you've done since you've been here. I commend you, Gary, for the way you run the sanitary engineers department. I commend you, Martha, for the way you run the auditor's office. We have one hell of a great team here. Most of us.
Videos made from her desk, didn't get disciplined because she knew she was next in line for a job. That's what-
Because social media, like what you're doing right now and every single week where you stick that phone up people's asses everywhere you go. Yeah, this is, once again, we're getting off the rails. There's tension. There's, you know, we're getting too close to an election day and this stuff is going way off track. So anybody have anything else positive or good for the county?
Yeah.
Any phone callers on there, Tim?
Good morning Commissioners. This is Beth Carmichael with Trumbull Tourism. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Breath of fresh air, Beth. We need it.
Well, I just wanted to update everybody, Commissioners and the public to let you know that there's a lot of excitement growing about the eclipse. The eclipse is coming in less than two months. Trumbull County Tourism as a community service purchased 5,000 eclipse glasses and within three weeks, we have sold out of those glasses. So I wanted to let everybody know that, but we've also started a new website called trumbleeclipse.com. And that is what we're doing on behalf of our community is calling around to find out who has eclipse glasses. We're putting that on our website. You will also find information on events and programming that is coming up related to the eclipse and then eclipse viewing sites and day of events as well. Right now, I wanted to let you know that the city of Warren has worked with or is working with the Warren Trumbull Public Library and the Warren City Schools and is designating Harding's Malinkoff Stadium as one of the viewing sites. You can also have a viewing site at Mosquito Lake. There's going to be areas there. The Eastwood Mall Complex, the Grand Resort and up in Kinsman is the Kinsman Library is doing an eclipse event and viewing site there. Those are the viewing sites that we have right now. If anybody knows of any other programming that is not on that website, please let us know because we're happy to update and we're updating it almost daily. It also has some information on the times around the county that the eclipse is going to occur. The amount of time in different locations for totality as well. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we are working on this and we're working throughout the community and we're looking forward to an eclipse event.
Beth, as well, thank you for all you do and especially on this. You know, people might not realize this, but I, I sure didn't. But in talking to Eddie Colbert and the state, they're expecting like, I think these numbers are maybe a little skewed, but maybe over, you know, 50 to 100,000 people in this area for this eclipse, which is, I mean, I don't know about that, but, but if it is, I mean, that's going to be something that we need to be ready for and accommodate. I know some of the schools already have already either early dismissal or not having schools. I think some schools. Beth, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, that is. John Hickey with Emergency Management has been doing an amazing job. He's been on this for over a year. There was a meeting a week or two ago and it brought in State Highway Patrol, the County Engineers Office, the event locations, hospitals. So he has been totally on top of all of this. So you can go to the Emergency Management website for updates there. We also have a link on this Trumbull Eclipse website to his website. So our emergency response people are definitely understand it. John and I did a presentation to the Commissioners in August, I believe. And we still believe that, you know, it's going to be the last minute. People will start looking at that weather two weeks prior. And then if it looks like the forecast is going to be sunshiny and, or even a little sunshiny, people will start to make those decisions on where they go. There's going to be signage on our roads through our regional ODOT, through the County Engineers Office, just to let people know to please be safe. And yes, that people are saying maybe 100,000 people will be here. And again, Youngstown is only going to have 99.5% totality. Anywhere south of Gerard is not within the path of totality. They will get a partial eclipse, but they won't be on that path of totality. But 95% of Trumbull County is on the path.
Well, this is obviously a chance for us to showcase Trumbull County, another chance to do that. And whatever you need the County Board of Commissioners to do, we don't agree on obviously a lot, but we agree on this. We'll assist in any way necessary. So please let us know.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Christine Novicki and I'm the President of the Vienna Historical Society. And I wanted to make a statement on behalf of the Society's Board of Directors. The Vienna Township Historical Society thanks the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and each Commissioner individually for awarding us county ARPA funds through our application to the Board of Commissioners, allowing us to make drastically needed repairs and capital improvements to our Historical Society building, headquarters, meeting room and historical display located on the Township Bicentennial Parkgrounds in the center of the township. The funds received were deposited in the Historical Society's IRS 501(c)(3) tax exempt bank account, pending distribution for payment of the repairs and improvements until as they are completed. Upon completion of the project, a full accounting will be filed with the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners. As a 501(c)(3) tax exempt organization and receipt of public funds, the Historical Society's financial account, the deposit and expenditure of said funds are open for review and inspection by the public upon request or on the IRS website. We are appalled at this accusation about one of our board members and the integrity of our Historical Society. Thank you.
If you're still, if she's still on the line, I do, I did give her her phone number. I just wanted to make sure. Truly after a concern, two concerns from people from the public, I knew nothing about this guy's background until people reached out to me and were concerned about that. They said now he's associated with that. And then I put two and two together and became immediately concerned. I just want to make sure that he doesn't serve in any capacity with the money.
It has nothing to do with you.
I'm just asking, is he, is he, he's not on the, he's not the treasurer is what I'm saying. Like I didn't, I wanted to find that out. You said you found that out, but I don't really believe.
You knew that back in 2020, we were running together. You had a discussion about that with me.
Again, this was the individual that works at 911, but what you were throwing F bombs at, less than range.
No.
Just for clarity. No, it didn't happen? Look it up, folks.
If she's still on the phone, I just wanted to, I just wanted to find out who the, who the officer is there.
The officers are available on our website at viennahistory.org.
Okay. So I'm asking you while you're on the phone, since I, you know, I'm asking.
Why don't you do this in a non-public meeting so that you can have, you can at least find the answers to these questions and not run someone's name through the mouth?
I'm just asking who's, who isn't, who controls the finances there? That's all I'm asking. Can you please answer that?
501(c).
I understand. So I see that the check was deposited. I don't see who signed it and I'm just concerned. Just want to answer that.
And it doesn't matter. Even if it was Mr. Ford, which it was not, it doesn't matter. He was not convicted of anything. Because I did my research yesterday. I went on their website, just like you could, and I saw who the treasurer is and it's not him.
Stop screaming at me. All I'm saying is that when someone resigns because they failed a polygraph and admitted to stealing, then that's kind of a concern when, you know, there's funds associated. I just want to make sure that he wasn't in a, he wasn't, it's not allegedly. I just want to make sure he wasn't associated with it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
From their website, the Board of Directors. Christine Novicki is the President. Pamela Clower is the Vice President. Carol Pennington is the Secretary. Pamela Klinger is the Treasurer. Jeffrey Ford is on the board. Jill Peg is on the board. Norma Brink is on the board. Heidi Brown is on the board and Belinda Weiss is on the board. I know some of these people. They're very good people.
Yep.
And I'm sure they're all equally appalled by this.
All in Vienna where this occurred.
Heidi Brown is the person who gave him the opportunity to resign. So that's good. Okay. I'm happy to hear that who the treasurer is. Thank you.
Wow.
Or who it's not.
Am I able to speak now?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Tiffany Fisher. I am a former dispatcher for the 911 Center. I worked 10 years there of which I worked with Jeff Ford and he is an exemplary employee. And for those comments to be made is totally out of line. It has nothing to do with what's going on here, other than the fact that Commissioner Frenchco has a bug up her butt for the fact that he called her out and did not allow her to be in charge of something. That's the problem first off. Second off, Commissioner Malloy, I don't know how you sit there and let her make the comments that she makes. Number one, when she calls you honey, she is sexually harassing you every single time. And then she calls you stupid, which is completely out of line. I have listened for the last two years to these meetings and nothing has changed with Commissioner Frenchco. And the saddest part is, and I even hate to admit this, I voted for, I voted for her because I did not want to see Polifka back in that position. First off, I voted for her because you know what? Here comes a woman who really had some good ideas and really came across like she wanted to make a difference. The only thing that she has made is a mockery of the Commissioners in Trumbull County and that's sad. It's very sad. And the biggest part, Commissioner Frenchco, you should be ashamed of yourself because a lot of people are ashamed of you for you. I'm very sorry that everybody has to put up with this week after week after week. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And I want to reiterate, I had no idea about anything about this guy until people started calling me and then I received a message. So.
And instead of doing your due diligence, not in a public meeting by bringing his name up, you could have called them and discussed it with them. But you chose to do it in a public forum and try to soil somebody's good name, which is appalling. And he's, and he's a model employee, by the way.
I wasn't going to talk to, about you guys.
I think this board is completely disgusted and appalled.
Do we have any other calls there, Tim?
Word of the day.
Okay, it sounds like there's no other comments. So I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion adjourned.
More people who haven't come up.
Second emotion.
Mark that, anyone else?
Angela Mesa.
Yeah.
Someone from the press, you can come up too.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
You know, no, because I think there's someone else who might want to come up and take a stab at me.
There's probably 1,400 employees that would love that. But they'll do that on March 19th of the voting polls.
Call them all up here.